All rise please. Good evening, everybody. Before tonight's meeting, we had the pleasure of interviewing and meeting Nick Donello and Philip Trevschick, who are both juniors at CB West and have applied for positions on our boards and commissions. And we will now entertain a motion to appoint Nick Donello to Parks and Rec and Philip to Performing Arts Council.
Right.
Is there such a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Would you mind sending them the information they need? Thank you. We have a presentation tonight.
It looks like Mr. Peters is not here yet.
We'll pass on Mr. Peters. Any visitors or public comment? Sir? How are you?
Good, good evening.
Good evening.
I was wondering if you would have time to give a brief summary of what transpired during the police arbitration and who makes up this arbitration panel.
And can you please tell us for the record who your name is?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Dave Bauer, Lower State Road.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. If the Board of Supervisors and the Police Bargaining Unit cannot come to an agreement, which we tried to do for almost a year, we're mandated to go to arbitration. We have an arbitrator and the PBA, which is the bargaining unit for the police, has an arbitrator. And then between those two arbitrators, they pick a neutral. And those three arbitrators hear the case for both the township and for the police, and the neutral arbitrator makes a decision. And that's how it happens. And that's the mandated process that comes to us from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Do you care to add anything to that?
I don't know if that answers all your questions, but that's kind of a succinct description of what takes place and how it works.
And that one, what did we do?
Well, actually, the negotiations went on for over a year. We weren't able to reach an agreement on wages and contributions toward health insurance. And then the arbitration process consists of the presentation of a lot of information on both sides. The township presented its financial affairs, cost of health insurance, and all those things. PBA did the same. And then it turns into a process that the chairperson just described between the three arbitrators.
Is that good? Thank you. Any other public? Okay.
Kathy McCrory. Do you want my address or?
No, you're good.
Good, thanks. I have some questions about what I read about land from Mr. Toohill being purchased by the township for preservation. Is now the appropriate time to ask questions about that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm concerned about how the process of this appears. A Board of Supervisors buying property that's owned by one of their members. So I'm curious, just factually, I need some information. And I'm wondering when the property was originally bought by Mr. Toohill?
2006, I believe.
And you approached the township, was it in 2007, about developing that?
You know, I don't remember any of the dates, per se, but I think it's all on record with the township. Not only did we approach them, we applied and received full development or full approval of the development of the property.
And then the property was not developed, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the reason that it wasn't developed was what?
Me just ask, can I answer all these as?
Sure.
One-on-one? It doesn't matter if I take time? Okay, all right. We had, my wife and I decided to go another route with the property. I was a major, Dowell being one, a little personal information. And we were farming in the property. Started farming it then, and we're currently farming it. And then, I can't tell you, or rather, remember the dates or the sequence of events, but we, when we knew we were going to take a different path, we approached or had a conversation with the open space committee about preservation of the property.
And when was that?
I think it was in 2010, as I recall.
It was. And there's actually one of our members on the open space committee who lives near that property, and he actually noticed.
Ocho.
Yeah, Mr. Johns, Harold Johns. And he actually noticed that the property was being farmed, and he mentioned it about the same time that the Two Hills approached the township about preservation and conservation easements through the county open space program.
And what was the cost of the property when you bought it?
What was the purchase price? I guess that's public.
It's a public record.
Public info, it was a million and one. I think that's even been in the paper when Intel talked about.
It may have been. I really don't have specific information, and that's why I'm trying to get it. And if this proposed deal would go through, you would preserve some of the property and the rest would be preserved as open space? Is that the plan?
No, I believe the intent and what the open space committee recommended was after, when you have a property on a list to be vetted, if you will, they want to see if it meets certain criteria or certain goals of what the open space committee has. And once that's done, then the procedure is if both the open space committee and the property owner wish to pursue it, they order an appraisal done of the property. And that's to help ascertain a value of an easement which they would put on the property. That was done, I can't remember the names or the dates, you know, such or who was used, but that was subsequently done. And then, after that, a typical procedure is then, if the open space committee and the participant or the resident wants to pursue it, based on the value that they determine is reasonable for compensation for the property or for the non-development of the property, then if the open space, they agree in the number open space committee would recommend to the board or to the liaison, I guess, which is Barbara Lyons, the open space liaison. And I think at the last meeting, which is when she brought up the recommendations, and I think the next two steps, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, first is ask for a recommendation for the township engineer to look at the meets and bounds of that space to be preserved. And then the next procedure is to then have, I believe, the language of the easement, is that right, Jeff?
Well, you have to do an agreement reflecting the consideration and what is going to be preserved and the content of the easement itself. And I would note that the authorization to proceed with the appraisals took place at a board meeting, I think, last spring. Am I right, Stephanie?
Actually, it goes back because it was, they were done in April, so it would have probably been winter of last year.
Winter of 2011 or 2010, 2011?
Probably early 2011.
2011. And I recall five then-board members voting in favor.
Yes, they did.
Which would have been, the two members are no longer here.
The county also has to approve?
Yes.
Any acquisition of open space?
That was my next part. Now, we have an open space committee here. The appraisal has not been done yet because.
Appraisals were done.
It has been done.
Three appraisals were done.
Three appraisals were done.
And the appraisal on the property was, I think, it's been reported.
Yeah, there was a value assessed on the eased property rather than on the whole property. That's what they're trying to ascertain. I think it was 700.
It was over 700,000.
Over 700,000 for the eased part of the portion of the property, which is, the idea is it's the compensation or the value of that which you give up for not developing it then, or for the value of the land. And it's the county policy to supply 75% of that funding, Bucks County, from their open space group. And then typically, the municipalities would match that 75 with 25% to bring up that value. In this case.
I'm sorry, say that again.
75% of the funding is provided by the county. Typically, 25% is supplied by the municipality. In Doylestown Township, they don't do that. Therefore, the 25% would be donated by my wife and I in lieu of those funds. It would be a donation back. So whatever that value was, I don't know if that was calculated. Whatever the math is, I'm not sure.
So we're talking about 25% of 700?
It's actually the average of two appraisals is what the county requires. The average of two appraisals, the county will then provide 75% of that, the average of that together. And then the donated portion would be the 25% from the applicant.
And going forward then, if these next steps, then the county has final approval? Is that the approach?
Yes, we have to make a presentation to the county open space board, and they would then, because it's county funds that would be authorized to preserve the property.
So what questions haven't I asked that I'm going to be sorry later that I should have asked in terms of the process? Anything I'm missing here?
No.
Did I cover it accurately?
Yeah.
I don't know about as far as in terms of the process, but obviously, you're here because you saw or heard about the last meeting, Mrs. McCrory. And the board decided at that point to reevaluate what was proposed at that meeting. So we're going through that reevaluation process. It wasn't going through as it maybe would have been some other issues. So we sent it back to get some reevaluation done of it.
I disagree with that.
Clarification, I think.
Yeah, it's not quite.
Well, I mean, it was clear that.
I think it had to do with what was to be the extent of the easement.
Which means the area to be preserved.
That was the only question.
I appreciate that.
That's all I meant.
I sort of figured that out, but.
I know you.
No.
Are there anything else that you?
Just to comment.
Go ahead.
When I read the article, it reminded me of a number of years back, there was a national environmental group that I regularly contributed to that was called out because members of their board of directors could buy large pieces of property, often waterfront or other desirable, donate the majority of it to the environmental group, keep the best piece of the property for themselves to have a spacious home, and know that then they were surrounded by property that couldn't be developed, and then took a very generous tax deduction. That stunk. It reminded me of that when I read this story. My response then was to stop contributing to that environmental group. I've not contributed since. I don't have that choice as a taxpayer. So I would caution this group that this, whether it's, it would be fine if someone else owned the property, isn't the only issue. It does matter how this looks to the community and what this means to taxpayers. Because most of the comments I've heard about this property before this issue came up is that the development didn't go through because the market tanked. I get that. But I hope that this isn't a way of rescuing somebody from what turned out to be a not very profitable land deal.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Further, just a couple of points Mrs. McCrory made, if I can. One, it did go, maybe this is just verbiage, but it did go through, if you will. You know, we did receive final approval for the, for the final, final, if you will, for the subdivision. And all my participation in, as an applicant, has been me, Sean, you know, my wife and I, if you will, not as certainly predated my position from this January as supervisor. And I merely, or rather, completely participate as a resident. Since then, and since the action from the last board meeting, I, of course, abstained from any, you know, the votes and such. So to make sure that it's clear that it's an open book and there's no improprieties or whether unfounded or not, you know, people will say things, you know. And I think overall, the idea of preserving this space, which the open space committee ranked or considered high as a valuable piece to preserve, the benefit from that for both the community and the surrounding part of the township outweighed what any, you know, unfounded, you know, comments or speculation would have been. So that was why I thought this was really, and I still feel that way, it's, you know, certainly worthwhile project, so.
And if I can, yes, it was based on the amount of open space that was going to be eased, if you will, and that was some of the concerns. But by the same token, the fact that someone gets an elected office, they don't lose their rights as any other resident, and that's the way I looked at it. Sean is a resident, he's got a piece of property, and it goes through due process. And again, my dispute is about the size of the easement. And just one further thing, I would think that if this board doesn't approve it, I wouldn't think that Bucks County would approve it, so. But that's just my opinion.
I just have a question. If not, can this go through if not approved by this board?
No.
No.
Okay. I was just clarifying just what you said. Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Any other comments for any other subject? Okay, thank you. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, May 1st. Pico Green Region and Basis Species Education Trail Dedication is Friday, April 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Central Park Environmental Education Area. Healthy Kids Get Up, Get Out and Play is Saturday, April 28th at 11:00 a.m. in Central Park. It goes on until 3:00 p.m. Sponsored by CB Cares and the CB Central Bucks Family YMCA. Local Government Week is this week, April 16th through the 20th. Touch a Truck, Saturday, May 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Central Park. Shred Event for Doylestown Township residents is Saturday, May 12th, 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Township Building. And the annual Township Golf Outing is Monday, June 4th at Doylestown Country Club. The deadline for registration is May 18th, and it's an early start. Next item on the agenda, minutes approval for April 3rd.
Move for approval.
Any questions or comments, changes, interliniations? All in favor of the motion?
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. Second, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for keeping me legal. Any correspondences? Report from solicitor.
Nothing we won't talk about later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Please, Chief.
I have two items I'd like to discuss. Number one is with the recent amount of vandalism occurring in our township parks and the community, especially along the newly constructed Parkway. I have decided with speaking to the township manager, discussed implementing a bike patrol. I'm in the process of securing funding for the bicycle itself. I have adequate funds in my budget to equip the officer to do this. At this point, I think it's a win-win for the situation. We will be able to spend a lot of time on the weekends and during the daylight hours in our parks and try to curb some of the vandalism, you know, cigarette littering and overall vandalism. I think that the image of the bike out there can do nothing but help the image of the overall of the township.
Yeah, I agree. Especially since we've had lots of complaints of dogs off leashes and so on, that's a dangerous situation, so.
Yeah, we intend to, I have an officer, Noda Francescu, who's expressed an interest for over three years to have a bike patrol in the township. He's one of our younger officers, he's very aggressive. I've spoken to him, and he understands the concerns of our Parks and Recs Department as far as what's going on in the parks, and he intends to aggressively enforce those violations.
Thank you. Everyone, how's it going? That was a good idea.
I think it's an excellent idea.
Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
The second thing with the board appointing me as acting chief of police at your March 6th meeting, kind of left a vacancy as far as a second-in-command for me. I'm going to ask the board to consider appointing Detective Matthew O'Connor as my second-in-command, for lack of better words, the acting lieutenant, until this merger can go through. Detective O'Connor's been with the department since 1985. He's served as a supervisory capacities. He's currently serving in the detective unit. He's in the building pretty much Monday through Friday. And I have a very good, strong working relationship with Matt. And I would ask the board to consider allowing me to appoint Matt as my second-in-command, acting lieutenant.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Matt O'Connor to lieutenant.
I think it's, he gets to appoint. We approve the appointment.
Make sure it's acting.
It is acting.
Okay, I don't say acting.
Yes, acting lieutenant, as I am the acting chief of police, hopefully pending the merger.
Second on that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief?
Nothing else.
Thank you. Manager?
I skipped the engineer, but.
Oh, I skipped the engineer. Do you have anything, Mr.?
Not for you at this time.
Now it's me, right? I just have the request to be able to attend the PSATs and the APMM Annual Conference this year. As stated, PSATs will be in Hershey, May 6th. And the APMM, as you know, I'm president of that association, and outgoing, that will be my conference as president. And that's in Lancaster, May 22nd through the 24th.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Second. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else going to PSATs? Supervisors going to PSATs?
I think we all are, yeah.
Awesome. Supervisors' comments. Mr. Toohill?
Only that, our development fund development committee has met again, rather, the subcommittee of the Ways and Means Committee met to evaluate the recommendations and such from the previous meeting. And their intent was to kind of narrow that down, define that, or refine that list. And I think they're working on that and made some recommendations from that, hopefully to be able to present to the board at a later time.
Okay.
Otherwise, I appreciate everybody's help with that. Yeah, thank you.
Tom?
Not for you at this time.
Ms. Manning?
Just one comment to the chief. I'm glad that we're doing something because I was just back saying that I was running and seeing so much graffiti. So I'm glad that we're, you know, taking active steps to try and be out there and do something about it. And my question was, you know, on the 202 bypass, there is a ton of graffiti on those brand-new, beautiful bridges. I know there's absolutely no reason to start cleaning it now while it's still closed, but I would hope that before that opens, we take active steps to make sure it looks nice.
Yeah, they had, there had been some prior vandalism to it, and they did clean that. And, you know, unfortunately, it was back there within a week. The people that are doing the construction decided that it's not visible to the general public, so they're going to allow it to stay this way. We've had some enforced patrols up that way. We've actually had people out there at night on foot.
Okay.
Right now, it's, you know, it's hit or miss whether or not we find anybody. With the bike patrol, we will be able to get up in there.
Great.
Great.
Anything else, Ms. Manning?
No, that's it.
I just have two things that I also would encourage the chief to look at, especially in Central Park. I mean, we're spending a lot of money, we've got great assets there, cameras, some form of cameras. I don't know what the number is, what the location is, what the cost is, but I would appreciate some data on that because I hate to see us continue to build and have our assets marred. My second comment is, of the many meetings that Tom and I went to, one was the TAB board and trying to get participation, viewership, watching us on TV and web streaming. So I'm going to just give a little tease that the next meeting is going to be very, very interesting. So hopefully, you can tell all your friends to watch us on cable or do the web streaming because there's a.
Meeting?
No, no, next meeting.
Which meeting?
May 1st. The Board of Supervisors.
It is? Going to be interesting?
Yes, it is.
I think he's trying to give a teaser.
See, you'll watch.
I don't know if I want to be here.
I hope you'll watch. That's all I have.
Oh, boy.
See, that's a good tease.
I might be gone by then. I had just, I wanted to thank Stephanie Mason and Sandra Zidell and Mill Creek Elementary School, the second and third graders at Mill Creek, and Scott Berger, who's in charge of the elementary school social studies curriculum. We had the opportunity to present for LUM, Local Government Week. And we're, in Doylestown Township, we're developing a program for Local Government Week, and also something that could take us through the year where we go into the schools and we teach them about civics on a firsthand basis. And that's what we did today with the second and third graders at Mill Creek. And wonderful kids, want to shout out to them. They were a great, great group of kids, and we really had a good time. And I think they really learned some stuff about what we do in Doylestown Township. So I really appreciated that opportunity and working with the staff here to put that curriculum together. And we're going to advance on it and add to it for next year, and also really blow up Local Government Week and hopefully be an example for the rest of PSATs. So thanks for that. New business, Keely Avenue Traffic Calming.
I guess between Stephanie and I, we received a, I should say, the township received a request from New Britton Borough about installing traffic calming along portions of Keely Avenue, which, as you know, is shared in part by the township, in part by New Britton Borough. And they're talking about speed restriction and so forth and so on. Obviously, there might be liability associated with that, so we looked at what we had done previously with Doylestown Borough along Court Street, and we mirrored that, and we have prepared an agreement for your consideration, the effect of which is to authorize or consent to the Borough installing certain traffic calming devices at their sole cost and expense. And they indemnify the township, this township, for any liability associated with that. The only modification to the original draft was that we agreed to look to their insurance coverage first, where we're named additional insured. And if that's not adequate, we look to the Borough for their responsibility to indemnify the township of any claims. They're also required to maintain it, and they've assured us that there won't be any consequences far as no removal and the like. So if you're so inclined, I believe the agreement meets the objectives that this board in prior years, not this board, but prior boards felt were appropriate for a similar event with Doylestown Borough.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with New Britton Township to send for.
New Britton Borough.
I meant New Britton Borough, that's okay. With New Britton Borough, we set this, sent this agreement to them with our approval, and I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there like the speed bumps on Court Street?
Yeah, similar. They have that, they have the covered bridge there, and they have a lot of parks things there, which creates some issues, so.
Well, they have to maintain this.
Right, they're maintaining it.
They're maintaining them.
Have the responsibility, the liability of this.
Chief?
This topic has been brought up repeatedly in the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting. And I would only ask that, I think it's a great idea to do this on Keely Avenue, I would just ask that any time that New Britton Borough runs a speed calculations with their machines out there, that they forward us the results, because I would like to see if it's doing what they asked it to be done. So if we decide that somewhere down the line, this is something that we want to use on our roadways, we have a little bit of statistical data to show that it works.
Chief, you can make the inquiry to their, whoever runs their process, because obviously it's something your level, not at the board's level.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds good. All right, there's a motion, the second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Five and O. The 2012 and 2013 fuels bid?
Yes, we have Dick's memo. As always, we've participated with the Bucks County Consortium on the prices. Little complicated with the fixed price versus the floating price, but Dick's recommendation is, you know, outlined that we go with the fixed price this year versus the price that we paid last year, corrected?
Let's clarify that.
Floating, sorry.
It's a fixed price for delivery, or it's a floating price for the gasoline or the diesel fuel.
The only difference is, from any bidder, is what the delivery charge is.
Right, and that's what fluctuates based on that.
I did look at some of our most recent costs. We're paying about $288. I did look at some of our most recent costs, we're paying about $288 right now. For all, last year it was like $225, somewhere in that neighborhood, so the fixed cost, which was offered, is $4. You know, if you think gas is really going to go up, it's a great deal, but somehow that kind of bothers me to be paying, overpaying when you don't have to, and if you deduct the tax out of the retail price that we see today, we're still down below $3 right now purchasing gasoline, so.
So effectively, you have a fixed price, you're actually paying $5.20, because if you factor in the taxes like the rest of us pay, that's what the price would be.
Exactly.
Now, can we get out of this agreement if we so see it down the road and the prices of gasoline?
Yeah, once we've set the bid, we're going to set it for a year with the consortium, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to buy it at that price.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the bid?
Some of.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Township's naming policy, that's something we've done some years ago, and it's come up because the Ways and Means, or the Funding Subcommittee of the Ways and Means, has taken a look at ways that we can, alternative funding for special things that we do in the township, and that's why we've been asked to look at our naming policy. Has everyone had a chance to look at it? Do you want to, do you care to comment on it? I guess we're, I guess the, you wanted us to look at it to make it, see how we could make it consistent with accepting large donations and.
Well, according, if I may, Karen Sweeney, who's our director of park and recreation, naming effectively, or sponsorship of fields or anything in Park and Recs was prohibited, or rather, limited only to those as a memorial, or rather, those deceased, and she thought that was quite, in fact, I think she was the one that drafted the existing naming policy, is that right, Stephanie?
Yes.
Yeah, but she got direction from us, we pretty much said, no, you've got to be dead a year.
Right, right.
Sounds callous, but you know, we're not going to name anything after you unless you're dead a year.
Of course, at that time, though, the economic situation was a little different.
So that said, based on what Karen, I think at the last meeting, said that if we want to explore that, she can't pursue it until something was ratified or changed within that?
Well, I think it's safe to say that if we want to vote this back to Karen, that she can amend this policy to, and then we can take a look at it to redraft, I mean, I took a look at it.
We just recommend for her to review it and maybe.
Yeah, I think she can add some provisions, and I can help her with this, because I did a couple of notations myself, under the objectives and criteria and evaluation criteria that would allow for people to give money, large sums or whatever, so we can name things after them and/or take out, take away that one-year memorial restriction.
So you think the table was proof?
Well, I think it has to go back to.
We should recommend to go back to Karen.
Okay.
I would just like to make one comment. Don't look excited, but I'd like to make one comment. The way I read this, if you go to page three, under the evaluation criteria, specifically what you're talking about, says, "Naming a park or recreation facility in memory of a deceased person cannot be considered until at least 12 months after the date of the person's death, or at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors." What that means to me, a layperson, is if Karen came in here tomorrow, fulfilled all these requirements that, you know, that it asked for in the resolution, if we so choose, the discretion of the board could name, or give the naming rights to someone that died last week.
Correct.
So.
Paul?
I think that, no, I was just, I think the discussion that came up was to name things after people that were not deceased, and, you know, I.
Clear.
That was kind of what was talked about a little bit, that we take away them being deceased, you know. I'm fine with Karen going back and taking another stab at it, my, my, I don't tend to agree with just kind of opening it up, you know, regardless of our economic times, I think we have to, we have to understand the significance of the naming process, and I don't know that we should just start putting, you know, to bring in more money into the township, hey, you know, if you can give us X amount of dollars, regardless of if you're deceased or not. We're going to name it after you. I think there still has to be some sort of significance in this process and what it means.
You're absolutely right.
The other thing, the reason why the year period was discussed and approved by the board previously was that right after someone passes away, there's a lot of emotional about, emotion about it, and people come up and ask for things, and you need to settle down and just sort of reflect upon it, and then see if someone had a significant contribution to the township or its residents, so that you don't get caught up in the moment and do it more reflectively one year later. That was some of the rationale back then, when the policy was originally adopted.
I mean, I think that the way it stands right now, I think that there probably are people in this community that you wouldn't have to be too reflective about, you know, you could say absolutely if they had passed sooner than a year, but right now, as it stands, we have that discretion in place, we can say, it hasn't been a year, but you know what, we want to do this, so, I mean, definitely tell Karen to go back and take a look, but, you know.
Needs to be tweaked a little bit.
Sure.
Make sure.
Needs to be thought through, too.
Just make sure she knows the concerns that Rick and Ryan expressed tonight.
All right, let's go back. New hire policy.
Yes, I've drafted a resolution that would amend some of the current benefits received by the non-uniformed employees, should we make a hire of a full-time employee sometime in 2012, and I've outlined everything here, that what would hire, what would happen if we hired someone this year, and the contributions that they would make towards healthcare, the type of healthcare plan they would have, whether they were smokers or not, whether we would provide other benefits such as eligibility for, to receive tuition reimbursement, health care reimbursement, et cetera. So this is a draft, it's open for discussion and comment, but just wanted to get the board's feel, I feel as though we should have something on the books if we were in a position to need to hire a full-time employee.
These are some of the things that we talked about when we're trying to do cost savings, is new employees hired after a certain period of time would have a lesser benefit package, but it's something that we have to do by resolution.
And it doesn't apply to police, because the hiring process is different from police.
They're unique.
Well, they're not only, not only are they a member of a collective bargaining agreement, but also there, there is an entirely different methodology used to hire police, you have testing, and you have interviews, and that's holographs and background checks and all that sort of stuff, so.
This is just non-uniformed employees.
Stephanie, I have one question. While I think it's really good that you put it in there, the full-time employees hired after January 1st, 2012 will be required to be non-tobacco users, non-smokers, my only question on that is, is there any sort of liabilities with us putting that in versus you have, after January 1st, do we have people hired before January 1st that are tobacco users? I just don't know if there's any implications of that.
Anyone, anyone who currently is employed, who puffs away, can continue to puff away after the resolution is adopted, because you can't remove them, their position because of that.
But it's okay, I mean, we, we're not going to find ourselves in some sort of case where they were discriminated against because.
Day.
It's okay, I didn't know.
Smoking or non-smoking, never been recognized as a class of people that can be discriminated against.
Okay.
And we're looking for potential cost savings, and there could be a savings on our entire insurance policy.
With health, sure.
By having a policy.
I mean, I like it, I think it's great, I just want to make sure.
And we would back this up with a, with a more detailed non-smoking policy.
Okay.
Which our healthcare carrier has indicated, through the trust, they would help us craft as well, so there would be, this is sort of just the general rule, but then we would have a much more substantial policy as well.
Great.
I did have one comment that I hope the rest would appreciate, yeah, I'm very big on education and training, I support it 200%, and it's demonstrated all the time, even some of the stuff we received this week with our packets, was information that came from staff and other, staff, and going to seminars and coming back with very, very good information. So I'd like at least the rest of the board to take a look at page two, the second one down, where it says, "Full-time employees hired after January 1st, 2012 will not be eligible to receive tuition reimbursement." I understand we don't want to pay for their masters or their four years of college, and I understand that, but I would like to see that tweaked a little bit, because I think we should encourage people to, in our staff, to go take a zoning course or go take something.
This doesn't, this is strictly for, tuition reimbursement is strictly for college. Maybe we need to clarify.
Doesn't say that.
Okay.
You need to clarify what you mean by tuition, or you could say, without board approval, either way you would clarify, but I would think you, you want to include tuition for a, towards a degree post-high school, or high school.
One of the things I know that they do at the county is, you know, they, they provide tuition reimbursement, and I don't understand the, fully, but I know that they have to stay in that position, you know, say I had tuition reimbursement, I'd have to stay with the county for 10 years afterwards, I mean, there's something to that effect, and maybe you could look at the policy that the county has set, because it makes it more vested in the employees kind of staying and working towards something. I mean, I'm, just, just a thought.
And this is something we do offer tuition reimbursement now, so it would be something, tuition reimbursement for college, like a college or master's degree, is what we would say we wouldn't do, but Rick is saying we should.
No, I think he's saying training and.
Training would still be, training's separate.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with a college course on municipal planning or whatever, I don't want to pay for a four-year degree.
Okay.
You don't want to pay for a four-year degree for somebody to advance their education and leave the employ at your expense, yeah, that makes sense.
I'd say we leave in the tuition reimbursement prohibition for new hires.
Just clarify.
It just, yeah, it doesn't apply to training.
Okay.
That's required in their jobs.
Okay.
And that's been our policy for a long time now, the last couple of years, we, we pay for training, we're not paying for.
Do we pay for tuition?
We would if someone.
You do now.
We do now.
If someone wants to go to college now, we're going to pay for it.
All right, in, in concept, we, we're going to pass this resolution on for final drafting?
That's it.
Is that okay? All right, and then we'll take a look at the final draft.
Sure.
Land development for Thompson's Toyota, they're requesting an extension.
They're requesting an extension until May 25th.
Move for approval.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Nija Track subdivision, subdivision.
This, the applicant proposed to subdivide tax parcel 9-14-17-2 into two lots. If you, if you know the property, it already consists of some commercial elements and a residential piece, and they're just dividing the two in half, the residential on one and the commercial on the other. The total parcel is 10 acres, the proposed new lot number one will be 5.8 acres, new lot number two about 4.2 acres. Lot number two will include the existing single-family detached dwelling, lot number one and two are both served by own-lot sewer and water. The plans were prepared by Gilmore and Associates, they were dated February 10th, 2012, there have been no revisions. Your Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to certain conditions, and obviously I'm ready to do that if you're so inclined. I don't know if you want Mr. Clays to give you a rundown, this is a long 611, I think, go-down property, everybody knows. In any event, if you're so inclined to approve the minor subdivision, it would be subject to the following conditions. Compliance to Boucher and James report dated March 12, 2012. Compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson Review Letter dated March 5, 2012. Compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission report dated March 15, 2012. Receipt of all permits approved under the agency's having jurisdiction over such matters, including if applicant dependant to Conservation District at all. Advocate to pay any and all costs incurred by the township connection with the application, including all professional review fees. Advocate to install a bike path, but the installation same shall be delayed until such time as a further application is received for a building permit or for land development for either lot, and also he's, the applicant's requested four waivers. From the provisions of Section 15320(c)(7) as far as the contouring of two-foot intervals to show locations of watercourses, they'll be provided when there's a new use. Showing the watercourses an onsite septic system that'll be shown when any new use shows up, waiver of respect to identifying the trees, that'll be done when the time comes, in Section 15334b3 as far as installing street trees at the moment. Mr. Clays, do you agree to those conditions, and am I correct, have you recited your waiver requests?
Yes, I do, yes, you do.
Is there a use change?
On the motion, will we approve this with the conditions set forth by our solicitor?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's no use changes, I just asked.
No, it's staying the same at the moment.
That's correct.
At the moment, what does that mean?
Well, I mean, nobody knows of any new plans, but it's not like he's casting stone.
Yes, you're supposed to change when you come back.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Treasurers' report, is there a motion to approve the April 17? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the bills list, April 17. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, May 1st. Aren't we closed on the 24th?
Yes, we are.
We should make that announcement, the Township Administration Building will be closed on Tuesday, May 24th for primary day, Election Day. Pico Green Region and Basis Species Education Trail Dedication is Friday, April 27th, 10:00 a.m. at the Central Park Environmental Education Area. Healthy Kids Get Up, Get Out and Play is Saturday, April 28th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Central Park. Sponsored by the CB Cares and the Central Bucks Family YMCA. This is Local Government Week. Touch a Truck is Saturday, May 5th, 10 to 1:00 at Central Park, it's free admission. The Shred Event is to, is for Doylestown Township residents only, Saturday, May 12th, 9:00 to noon at the Township Administration Building.